We'll call the meeting to order at 7:20. Board of Selectmen, Mark Brown, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any changes or discussion?
Yeah, do we want to remove the recreation update? Remove it altogether?
We can either remove it now or we can agree to pass by it during the meeting.
Okay, alright.
Would the board agree to put the discussion about the gravel, don't stunt it on there, for crushing, add that as an agenda item?
So, in the interest of helping out our highway foreman, let's do that in lieu of the recreation update. Does everyone agreeable to that?
Yep.
So, all in favor of...
Check your email sheet if you got that reporting.
Oh, yeah.
All in favor of approving the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Citizens' comments, items not on the agenda.
We haven't done the minutes.
Oh, we could do that. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for August 26th?
I would make a motion to approve the select board minutes for August 26, 2024.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Oh, wait, wait, wait. You're gonna ask everybody. Yeah, I had something. Well, I had it starred, and what did I do there? On the second page, oh, boy, you put me under the gun here. It says 7:45 PM, enter executive session. Above that... What did I have there?
I know that was the guy that was concerned about the pump station at Crystal Beach.
Yes.
We discussed should be discussed.
It was in the clerical error, it was something that was in the article. Maybe having an extra pump on the shelf, maybe that's what I...
I don't see anything wrong with the context of that.
Yeah, he'd ask what was going on there.
Yep.
So, I'm gonna call the question. All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, moving on. Citizens' comments, items not on the agenda.
This is very simple.
Ellen, I can ask you to come up to the podium and identify yourself.
Helen Steele, this agenda for the select board meeting was not posted for this week. There were just a lot of PDF files with other things on it, but not the agenda.
It was there, because Jeff sent it to me.
One of the events that put on today.
Correct, it was there, and Friday night, when I redid the agenda and went to post it, I posted the sewer one. So, that got caught today. So, it was there, I took it off to put a new one on there, and the sewer one got posted in its place.
There you go.
And then, but around town, I posted around town. But today Karen re-fixed it and sent the Eve subscriber back out so people could see it. But yes, that's my folly on that one.
It was a human error.
Your fault right there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mike's already been chastised.
Good.
Not really, but, anything else from, anyone on Zoom? Hand up.
Anybody on Zoom have an item not on the agenda they want to bring up to the select board?
Then let's talk about crushing. Mike, you're up. You've got the only copy.
Yeah, so, I apologize, I know I made copies and somewhere I lost them. But Jeff sent me some stuff that another company, because Hunter basically said they weren't gonna do this. So, we were beating our heads together trying to figure out, like, what to do, like, are we gonna come back and try to buy stuff, or are we going to get somebody else to come in there? So, Jeff had another company come in, Bazin Brothers, and went up there in the pit, and they said that they could do the work. I wrote that email earlier about the 3/8 inch minus gravel, but I'm gonna let Jeff handle all your questions since he did all the work on this. But Jeff, they have a copy of the email that you'd sent to me with that information and my email. So, hold on a second, hold on. Sorry, guys. They actually stapled these together, so there is copies for everybody, it's just they all got stapled, so I thought it was one.
So, I don't have to cardify it on my phone?
No, I'll hand them out here. But Jeff, so they have, they'll have the stuff in front of them in a second here.
Okay.
If you could pass those down.
Yep, yep, yep. Just one copy?
Yeah, one copy, but there's three documents.
I don't know what he's doing. There's three emails on there. One piece of paper. I think we got it right.
Okay.
What is this?
That's just the emails explaining some of the stuff, then you got another one that's with it. That's how, this one, the last one, has the bottom line price on it. He probably gave you like 65 paper clips, so I hope he can clip it together. So, Jeff, they're just getting the last copy, so they got the emails that you had sent me?
Okay.
So, this wasn't on the agenda, so this was an ad. I'm not sure what their questions are, but I'm not sure if the chairman wants you to give an explanation of where we're at with what happened and why we're at, why we're at this point.
Well, let me ask the board, is the board familiar with the history with the traditional vendor that said that we were too much into clay and they didn't want to crush anymore? Am I correct in that? And since then, this company Bazin Brothers has come in and said they can work around the clay that's there, and Mike Smith agreed with them that it could be done that way. So, that's, have I brought everyone up to speed? Jeff, do you have anything to add?
Nope, that pretty much sums that up.
Okay, because I had a conversation with Mike Smith, or not, Mike Jones, rather, this afternoon about this.
Yeah.
So, that's where we're at. So, I'm gonna ask Jeff Davison, what specifically are you asking us to do and what's your recommendation?
Well, I was just, you know, after we had lost Hunter, they basically backed out of kind of their contract. I was kind of grasping for straws and tracked down another crusher. And I talked to Heath and Mike, and Mike dug, Mike Smith dug a bunch of test pits up there, and really didn't see any reason why it couldn't be crushed. Bob Bazin came up, said the same thing. The price is gonna change some from Hunter's quote last year. It's mostly a mobilization fee for their crusher, so it's the similar material that we're gonna, that we've always gotten.
Will this also be a two-year supply, more or less?
More or less, yeah, depending on what we go through. We're gonna attempt to maybe sift out the 3/8 minus. I talked to Heath and the guys, so as long as it doesn't get too stony and we don't lose too many fines, we may be able to take a percentage of that and use it towards, like, winter sand. So, I talked to Bob today, he said that we can definitely check it out and see how it goes with that extra screener there. And if we like it, we can continue. If not, he'll pull it and just run the straight gravel.
The so what out of that is, if this process and that money gets us that, a volume of winter sand that we can use, then we don't have to buy as much winter sand.
That 3/8 stuff.
Correct. And then, the stone that we, that Jeff wants to put in it is gonna cost, has some cost to it, but the, we did this when Brent Clark was here, we did similar, the stuff we milled off the gravel roads that we paved, we reused that towards the winter sand, but you gotta put some stone in it probably, most likely, but that cost, that stone will be offset by what we're saving and not buying the winter sand.
So, what was the budget we had for last year's crushing that didn't happen, approximately?
48,000. 48,000. They were gonna do two crushings, one 5,000 last year, one 5,000 this year, and it was $96,000.
So, this'll get us 5,000 yards?
Yes, sir.
So... That's gotta be about half the cost of purchasing that gravel, right?
Oh, yeah.
20 bucks?
Yeah, gravel's expensive, for sure.
I forgot, I know we looked at it at one point, what it was, but it was up there closer to 20 bucks.
In any case, this'll cost substantially less than purchasing gravel.
And off the truck it or anything, so, boom.
Is there any guarantee it's gonna be good, clean gravel?
Well, he seems to think it is based on the pits. He seemed like, Hunter, I didn't feel real comfortable. They basically said, there's clay and you're gonna get what you're gonna get. Bob said, you know, it looks good, there is some clay, but it's not anything that can't be sorted out. He has bid this pit before, I don't think he's ever been awarded the project, but he's somewhat familiar with the area.
And you can monitor this as it goes and say, hey, this has got way too much clay in it?
Right, well, we're doing it anyway because we wanna get eyes on the 3/8s to see if that's something that we can use or can't use.
The bunny's in the budget? I thought so.
Yeah, it'd be better, because we're gonna save some money from buying the sand if we can use that 3/8, so that offsets the extra cost that, from Hunter's.
Right, the alternative is twice that much if we have to buy that material. Yeah.
Anyone willing to make a motion?
Yeah, we gotta truck it. Figure that out. And we gotta truck it. And trucking. Yeah. Yeah, so you're probably...
Over that, over double.
Five dollars a yard?
A yard.
Maybe more than that for trucking now.
5,000 yards? At 5,000 yards? Five bucks a yard?
I was thinking 5 dollars a yard for trucking, but that's probably ridiculously low at this point.
Probably, and you're talking about 5,000 yards, so it's gonna be...
Either way, even with my limited math skills, I know that half as much is better.
So, I'm ready to entertain a motion if someone's willing to make one.
I would make a motion that we award the bid of $56,350 to Bazin Brothers for mobilization and crushing 5,000 cubic yards in our pit, as long as it's monitored for quality, purity.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion on gravel crushing? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Truck tire purchasing.
Gee, I've got John Alexander next. That must have been the recreation update.
Yes.
Which we ditched.
Which we postponed until next meeting. We're talking about truck tires. Jeff, do you have a recommendation?
Yeah, Pete's was, that's the original quote we got, we got them quoted from a couple other places for the exact same tire, and it was, both places were significantly more.
So, your recommendation is to go with Pete's, and this can be done before we need the truck for winter maintenance, at least?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion from the board?
I buy those tires, they're $600 retail, from anywhere you buy.
Yeah.
Pete's, I can sometimes get 10% off, depending on what their stock is. But I talked to the guy that I deal with over there about this, and the municipal, this is the municipal discount, it's just a fantastic...
Yeah, I looked them up, too.
I would really love to be able to buy these tires from the local supplier here in town, but, you know, he's not gonna be able to provide that same level of municipal discount. Pete's also provides road service. If you're a regular, I mean, they'll provide road service for anybody, but if you're a regular customer, you get obviously a higher level of road service than if you're not. So, my experience with that company has been fantastic.
So, would you like to make a motion, Mr. Brown?
I would make a motion that... I don't have the amount right here.
360608.
Would you like to make a motion?
You make the motion.
I would make a motion to purchase eight truck tires and have them mounted and dismounted from Pete's Tire Barn for the sum of $3,606.08.
Have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think Jeff's off the hook. Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Absolutely, y'all have a good night.
You, too.
Thank you.
Move on to Sedexo. Restaurant bar license for approval.
This is the college again?
Yes.
So, what do they need, what do they need a liquor license for?
Well, we did it at the last meeting, I wanna know what, how's the difference?
We did the first class or something, we forgot something. I remember talking to Nedra about it. What did we forget, Mike?
I don't know, I didn't talk to Nedra about it.
I think we didn't do the, we only did a first class because that's what was on the agenda, but it wasn't on the, in the paperwork, they also had a third class. I remember Nedra asking me about this, right after the meeting.
Well, you weren't here at the last meeting, were you?
Yes, I was.
And what meeting did you miss? It was the last meeting you weren't here?
I missed the first meeting in August.
First meeting in August?
And I was at the last meeting in August.
So, we did one of these, right?
Yeah, we did, I think we did first class, and that was what was on the agenda, and they needed a third class as well.
What is the difference?
I don't honestly know.
First class is beer and wine.
Okay.
Third class is spirits, you have to have the third class license.
Okay.
Yeah, you...
You have to approve a first class, and then a third class must be approved.
Yeah, is this, so on the one for the 26th of August, you, the board approved for a first-class bar/restaurant license only?
I would make, make a motion to approve a third-class liquor license for Sedexo Operations LLC.
Second.
It's actually a restaurant slash bar license. I don't know if that makes a difference, but that's what it should be in the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
You're opposed?
I'm opposed.
Yep. Okay, now let's talk about stormwater designs for West Crystal Haven and the Village. Let's start with the Village.
This was quite the read.
Yeah, it was.
Not sure if you had a chance to digest it all, but this is the one that originally, when they designed it, was gonna carry stormwater from the streets in the village and the parking lot area underneath a pipe on the west side of the school and go underneath the basketball court. That's where they wanted to originally put this. So, when I met with them, and since the, with rec being in where it's at right now, I thought putting it under the basketball court would probably be not a good idea. So, we looked at an area directly behind the school, there's a little parking area directly behind the school, then it steps down, and it's a pretty big area, and then it steps down again to the railroad tracks, and then part of it bleeds over towards the T-ball field. So, I asked them to do two designs, one for underneath the basketball court and one for, because this will be covered up, I mean, it can be covered up, but my plan was to help have that thing resurfaced and don't, it's kind of foolish to have it resurfaced and then dig it all up. So, I asked them to do two designs, one for there and one for behind, directly behind the school, to gather this stormwater, and it's gonna, it's gonna get picked up and go into this settlement area, and then leach through the ground that way. And so, there's questions I had about, is this gonna bleed towards the T-ball field and cause wetness over time? The answer was no, these are, this is not gonna, that hill behind there is not gonna turn into a soggy big mess, and I'm like, I don't know, I'm not an engineer, so I asked, I thought I asked the right question, but maybe I asked too vague of a question, but we'll see. This was just the design for this, and we have a chance to look at the design when it's done, and, but if you had any questions that you wanted me to bring up to them before they went through a design process, I can certainly do that.
Is this a settling pond, or is it like a leach field?
It's almost like a leach field. It's, so, it's a series of all this other material that's not just stone, but it'll, it kind of lets the water slowly filter through the ground, and not a pond.
So, it's gonna be like a mound system, they're gonna dig this up and put in soils that are designed to remediate the water and then cover it back up?
Correct.
Is there a pump involved, or is it all gravity?
I don't know, Mark. I think if it comes from the street, it's gonna be all gravity. Like, the ones that are there now are gravity. But they, the ones that are there right now collect it and discharge it down at the, right, by the railroad tracks, and it's creating a washout down there, under high volume. It just comes out, it daylights, and then flows to like what you might wanna picture a dried-up stream bed, because it's not running most of the year, and then, but then it hits that, the railroad track bank, and then there's a sewer manhole cleanup right there, too, and it takes a hard right and then just washes everything out. So, that's where it daylights right now. Plus, we've got the old stone ones that are underneath that tree line that have failed, and they're falling in in some places, you can certainly tell where they were. And that still catches water, and of course, on heavy stuff, that's why it's causing the sinkholes, because it's taking the stone, the same thing behind Kerry Fowler's shop, is after time, it builds up, it starts washing away the dirt, and the stones collapse, and then Kerry calls us and we gotta go down and dig it all up and reset the stones, and this is, the grand plan eventually is to get rid of all that stuff, too, that stone, that stone stuff, but this is only a portion of the village that doesn't include that area by Kerry Fowler's. That gets discharged by the old town office and goes down along the old tennis courts and runs into the river there. So, we're talking two different discharge points at this point. This one's gonna handle the one that discharges behind the village school, the one that's over by Blue Cat, that's a whole separate ball of wax.
So, this is gonna discharge on the south side of the railroad tracks?
Correct.
And the other one goes under the tracks?
Correct. This, the pipe that daylights behind the school on the south side, it just terminates right, it stops right there, and then the one on, that comes down by Mechanic Street, that actually goes under the railroad tracks and runs along the old tennis courts and discharges in the river. That one gets really nasty during heavy storms. I was down there taking film of it going into the river and just creates that chocolate milk plume down there, and all that sediment builds up in the stream, and it's not really good for the ecosystem either, but this one's just for that south side.
If I read this correctly, this is the one that's doing Seminary Street and the school, period.
Definitely Seminary.
And it will also replace, it'll also, and the village school.
Oh, okay.
A couple of DI's in the village school lot, and it's also going to replace that stone culvert or drain, whatever you wanna call it, that's running adjacent to the road that goes behind the school.
Correct.
So, was this, the cost of this, was that covered by grants?
It is. They said all but maybe $500, but then she said, but even that may be covered, but it could cost us $500, I think is what it was. I'm gonna read it.
Of the design portion?
Correct. And then there's her, the grant that she works with, because they, I guess they can't give this money away, is another low cost to the town as well. It was in, it was either in here or in one of her emails that she talked about, the future one, but...
Yeah, the cost is super minimal, I believe, right?
Yeah, it was like 500 bucks.
So, this is, this particular one, the, the cost originally will be $27,400, most of which will be covered by grants.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, 100%.
With your pleasure, Board. Do we wanna proceed with this?
And I'm not an engineer, but we're gonna have to deal with the water at some point, and if there's grants available, we might as well take them.
Absolutely. Do I have a sec, do I have a motion in a second? Go for it, Rob.
What do we have to do, make a motion to accept it, or to approve it?
To approve, yeah. The proposal number's right on this page, Rob.
I would make a motion to approve bid proposal 2024-08-2 for the Stormwater Mitigation Design Project for the Village School from Fosse and O'Neill.
For, did you say, did they say the amount?
Oh, for 24, 27,400.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion on the Village School Stormwater Mitigation Design? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, let's move on to the Crystal Haven.
It just doesn't make sense to me. You know, every time they pave something more at the college, there's more runoff, and they're gonna put it in the same place, but they're gonna put some different soil down, and it's gonna be okay. But they're the engineers, right? That's what they do.
And it's all state stuff, too, and they don't, it's state money, and, but they don't, they don't talk to me, that's a different state.
Well, I think at this point, this one here, I think we have, really need to proceed, and that's for two reasons. Reason one, that drain that's running down between where the Povies lived, I don't know who lives there now, and the library slash village school, is an old stone, you know, it's laid-up slate culvert, and it's what, several hundred feet long, and it's failed in several spots already, and it's not gonna get any better. And this grant will be the first step in replacing that.
Right. Has too much volume in it for what it was designed for.
Ever spent on Seminary Street when we have a really heavy downpour in the summer? You can see why we need a new drain there.
It's, there's another drain underneath there now, there's a pipe, that's the one that daylights down by there, but there's still some collection in that old, from wherever it gets underneath the ground, gets into it, but there is a pipe that's actually underneath the driveway that runs, and that's when it daylights south of the railroad tracks and creates the washout down there.
Well, let's move on to the West Crystal Haven one, which was a lighter read, but still a read.
And these were the only two firms that showed up and bid on these, so they, I think they split the baby, and one did one and one did the other, they didn't both shoot for, not one of them went for both.
This one is also almost all covered by grants, correct?
Yes. And Heath just said Elm ties into that, too. Elm Street, that's the one that comes across. They, Heath and Mike did a great job fabricating a little vault there to collect that until we can get a real good fix for it.
They did that last year or the year before, I remember that.
Maybe it was even this spring, I can remember this. This year or last fall, I can't remember.
It had been this spring, I don't remember, I remember them doing it. So, let's talk about Crystal Haven.
Well, we know we need to do something there. We started this project in the spring, so...
And we told the landowner that was concerned that we would make all due progress on it.
I mean, we can do whatever we want down on the other end, but we really need to do something about what's coming down there, so, I mean, I'm good with this.
Well, I know you and, well, several of us spent a pretty good amount of time with Brandon Martin.
Yeah, yeah.
Tried to walk around with us.
Yeah, he was, he seemed very knowledgeable on what was going on, so I'm confident that they have, have it under control.
With your pleasure, Board.
This doesn't talk about what their plan is, though, right?
No, this is a, this is an authorization to create a design. That's all this does. There is no design right now. I mean, he's done some legwork, and he has a pretty good idea of where to start, but until we agree to pay him, he's not gonna spend the time designing it.
They've come up and looked at the site.
Yeah, I walked around the whole area with him up there, and they had some ideas of where they wanted to put stuff. Whether or not we'll get landowner permission or not, that'll be a different story, but he seemed to have it pretty well figured out where everything needed to land to...
Confident.
Yeah, to minimize how much gets down towards Kern's property.
This firm isn't gonna spend the time creating a design until we agree to pay him. them.
That's where this is right here, Nick?
Yes.
This is grant, this is grant through Hillary again too, right?
Yes.
Pretty much all of it, I believe.
Spent a lot of time on this this summer, we've got a...
And then there is, I believe, grant money available for the final project too, based on however much phosphorus they can remove from entering the lake, so...
Perfect.
I can do it if you want.
I'm ready.
I would make a motion to approve bid number 2024-08-3 to Stone Environmental for the sum of $26,900 for, uh, what is it, West Crystal Haven stormwater runoff.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I will just say it's frustrating how long it takes to do stuff.
We move the speed of town and the speed of state's slower than town.
Very frustrating.
Just wait till you have to move to the, move to the speed of US government. You think the speed of town is slow. So we're going to have a quick discussion on ARPA. Has everyone had a chance to look at this spreadsheet that we, was in our packet? And just to give you a brief summary, we had 1.34 million, I believe it was the number, total?
1.34, 349...
71.45.
72 dollars and 27 cents. So 27 cents a break of the bank.
And we have, we have obligated a million 26 of that, a million 26,000 in round numbers of that. So we have approximately 323,000 left to obligate. I've looked over Mike's earmarks or recommendations, and I don't really have any issue with that or see any need to rearrange any priorities. In particular, the salt and sand shed, I think that earmark needs to stand until we have a plan for a salt and sand shed.
Correct.
Are you sure that's enough money?
No, but based on current, well, Mike, you can speak to that and give a short version of what you know about the salt and sand shed.
Sure. So the town has 253,000 in our own coffers right now. 100 of that came from the sale of the old fire station and 153,000 came from the voters at a budget surplus a few years ago. So that, that's what we have in our pocket, plus you have some ARPA, whatever amount that ends up being, if you want, chose to use that. I met today with a local design contractor. We talked about one building. It's 60 feet by 100 feet, concrete walls, eight feet tall. When the building gets set on top of that, it's a, it's a pole barn, 23-foot-high ceiling to the bottom of the trusses with a 30-foot door. We're looking at probably, it's about 155 or so thousand dollars, 152 something, but I'm rounding in numbers, but 155,000 for the building. We're estimating somewhere around 60-plus thousand dollars, somewhere in that neighborhood for the concrete. And then we got to do the asphalt for the paving and we need to do some electrical work and stuff around there. So it looks like with what we have, excuse me, with what we have, we're not going to need that 160,000 dollars of ARPA. I'm wait, so what I need from the, for the board is to be able to hire this person, and I'm going to have to say the name, I'm just trying to, right now, to see what you have to say before I start throwing someone's name around there, for him to design it. Or it has to go out to bid. So if we put it out to bid, put it out there, usually we put it out there for two weeks or so, I'm gone for the next 11 days, so we can drop this thing out there this week. Might be able to get it back by the next board meeting, but if not, by the first one in October. If it has to go out to bid and you, we can compare costs.
We kind of have to put it out to bid.
Yeah, it's our policy. Yeah, it's, you'd be violating your own policy. So that's what I can do and I can use the bid specs. I talked to this contractor, I can use his bid specs or keep them generic enough where it does not, don't have to specify. What we can ask for is we just say, we want you to design, give us a design and build construction cost for a building this big.
Yeah, give them the size, yeah.
For the fall, for the use specified.
Yeah.
It has to meet all the state and federal regulations specifications for a salt shed.
I would say that we need to go ahead and do that.
Then, then we can get that, we can kind of get, see what the costs were going to be and then that'll help you drive the, whether, how much of the ARPA funds would be needed for it. Because there's still asphalt for the floor, concrete walls in the building and then some probably site work, electrical stuff. But if, if, if everything worked out with his numbers, we're talking probably 200 and, less than 300,000 maybe, maybe. The asphalt costs were, I don't know yet. We've asked for, we've given the dimensions and the thickness we wanted and we'll get a kind of a guess.
Yeah.
But it could be less than 300,000, so that means that, or somewhere around 300,000, so then you all might need to use...
We have 100,000 left to ARPA.
Correct. And we're getting to that 31 or 31 December deadline, so it's going to have to be, like, I gotta get this thing fired up and going.
And we need to obligate these funds by the end of this calendar year.
Yep.
So that's one of the reasons I wanted to have this meeting or have this on the agenda today and we may have to have it on the agenda every other week, every other meeting for the next two months to make some decisions and drive some stakes in the ground.
Spend some money.
Well, we need to make sure that whatever we do is in the best interest of the town, so we have to, you know, really make sure we get this right. But I think the salt and sand shed is a big part of that. Now, the question I have, Mike, is that building that is being proposed, would that be big enough to house a whole year's worth of salt?
Yes. It'd be, we're, we're hitting that 800 mark now, so we used to be at 1,000 and that building that we're in held 1,000, it's the same size.
Okay.
So yes, the true answer was yes.
It would not house our sand though, is that correct?
It will not.
What was that you said?
It will house only the salt. It'll house a year's worth of salt, but it will not house any sand. Now, is there any state regulations requiring us to put the sand inside a building?
No.
And if we're going to be able to use that 3/8 minus stone, it's not really going to be important.
That's what I'm thinking.
Right? If that gets wet, it's not going to freeze, as long as there's no clay in it.
So a salt-only shed would satisfy our needs for the foreseeable future? Do you agree with that?
I mean, I, it's been nice to have two, obviously, to keep the stuff underneath there, but other towns tarp their sand piles and they're digging, so it's, all but what they're digging at is tarped over. And as long as we move it, it has to be moved away from the road, because that was the, one of the complaints, it was, that silica and everything was getting washed into the stream. So as part of the design for that three acres of impervious surface that we still have to comply with, we just have to do the design of where it goes, because you've got the old landfill there that we have to be cognizant of. And we've got that little stream that runs from that swamp that comes and runs underneath the transfer station driveway on that close end. So, so yes, we, we look, we've been up there, we, it looks like we, we think we can fit everything in there and, and keep the stuff away from the road.
So the course of action you're recommending is that we proceed with putting this building as it's been proposed out to bid and do that in the next two days?
Yeah, but by, by tomorrow, I'll meet with Karen and, and Jeff and give them my rough stuff, because I leave on Wednesday, and that they can finish the bid packet, because we're not going to get into specifics. We're going to say we want a design, we talked about design, construction of a building this big to house sand, blah, blah, blah. So we're not to put in there, it has to be 10 feet on center for, you know, anything. So it should be relatively simple.
Okay. So that's not too heavy a lift for you and your staff? And I think that's the course of action we should pursue. Does anyone disagree with that? And that's an action item for Mike.
Okay. Are you still on, are you still going to talk about the ARPA stuff though?
Yes, we're still on, that's one of the bigger things on ARPA, but, so I've said my spiel on ARPA. Does anybody on the board have anything they want to contribute? The only question I have is if, is 90,000 anywhere near enough for a...
Stormwater?
For stormwater?
Yeah, that, that 450,000 I put in there as a project cost is probably, probably low, but it depends what happens with this one that Hillary's working on. That may mitigate some of this. So kind of, the, the catch 22 here is you have to get this obligated by the end of the fiscal, or the calendar year. And I'm not sure if I'm ever going to have an answer on all this other stuff, what Hillary's doing to figure out what else needs to get done. I know that the east side of the village by the Blue Cat and that, that stormwater area does need something, but whether or not I'm going to be able to find a grant that can, that, because it's all about timing. Grants only open certain times of the year, that I may not find a grant that's going to work for this. So that means I'd have to come back to you sometime before December 31st and say it's a no-go, so, but I would say that's probably likely the case, so I would be in your back of your mind, it's like, if we can't use that 90,000 there, what can we do?
My suggestion would be if we can obligate it towards our share of the downtown sidewalk project would be a good fallback, because we know that's going to be at least 90K. And we know we don't have all of that, or we, we're pretty sure we will not have all of that by the time we need to pay that bill in our sidewalk fund. We put 45,000 a year away in our sidewalk fund.
I think we're like 100, like, we're close to 100,000 short, so this is like, close.
So I think that should be a good fallback. If we don't know if we can use that for the storm drainage, we should, we should obligate it for the sidewalks, because we know we can do it there. And we also are very confident that could be done before the end of '26, right? The sidewalks?
If, if we can get, if they release the money, that's the problem, Nick, is they, they haven't, the state hasn't released that funding yet, so we can't go ahead and get any design going on it or anything. It's been held up for months, I'm probably close to a year now, about them not releasing that money. I check on it, like, I, I put it in my report, it's, I check on it every month or so and nothing been released.
That's for the scoping study? No, we did the scoping study.
Scoping study was completed. This was for releasing of the funds, which then allows us to go into design, you know, getting to get a, a design done so we can put it out to bid. And without the bid packet, we can't do anything. I can't, I mean, but I need the design to put, to put the bid packet out. So we got 1.2 million dollars that has to be used, you know, they're, they're going to move that, because they haven't released, released that money, it'll get moved, the date will get moved around, but it doesn't change the ARPA date. So if it bleeds over into 2027 for completion, then you lose that money for, for the sidewalks as well.
Is there anybody you can put pressure on, Mike?
Yeah, this is way, this is... At state level, so, I mean, the lady that I talked to, the project manager, I mean, I, I sent her, matter of fact, they got Rutland Regional Planning Commission involved, because they were asking me about it and I'm like, if you guys can get that money released, go ahead, have at it. And that was with Devin Neary. That went this far. So he couldn't do any more than me sending an email, so...
So is this state or federal?
Federal.
Well, if it gets close to the end of the year, it's not like we have any shortage of places we could spend 90,000.
True.
One other thing I'd like to talk on.
Certainly.
This is very, near, and dear to me. What's the status on that 32,250 for the fire, fire department?
That's, that's the remaining balance of that money that you appropriated, so I subtracted out the truck that they ordered, I subtracted out the UTV, and so that's, that was the remaining amount for the trailer. And I know they've been working, they, I talked to them, I talked to the fire department the other day, they're working on that, that plan for the trailer. They found one that fits underneath that price, so they'll definitely have that done well before December 31st of 2026, when this expires. But that's what, all that was, was that remaining balance of what the board already authorized.
I do plan on, the business meeting at this coming Wednesday, I do plan on bringing that up and asking them about that, the truck committee to see where they stand on that.
I think they talked to you about something too, didn't they?
Toolbox, as I thought.
Lot bed for the new truck.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, yeah. But the, they found a trailer that, and I was with, with Heath, who was on, so he's on there, so if there's a question particularly, he's listening right now. But Heath, Chris Fredda and John Scarborough, they showed me the UTV when it came in and we were talking about that, so he may have some, a better timeframe or timetable.
And if any of the board members want to go out and look at that after the meeting, I'll be happy to make sure the door is open for you. So yes, Mary Lee, that's still on, that's still on the radar.
It's still on the top. It's not under the table.
Well, you obligated it already, so it's there. It's, you know, just when they can execute it.
It's just how you're going to pay for it.
I don't think we actually obligated that. We obligated the money for the UTV and for the pickup.
Correct. Okay, so that was just the balance of whatever, of the original amount.
Yeah.
So that's still what I'm calling your ear, one of your earmarks.
Okay, got it.
For lack of a better term, your suggestions.
Got it.
Anything else from Rob or Mark or Bob? Got anything you want to throw in here in addition to that? Something that maybe we have forgotten?
Um, how, I don't know if the sewer budget or the sewer budget would have it, but how about the little building for holding the generator down at, the pump station down here, getting it out of the trailer?
That, this could, you can use that money for that. I think the board's shied away from that, because not everybody in the town uses...
Okay.
The sewer, so I think it was, they were trying, I think the, the goal was to try to maximize...
For everybody.
How, what can get out there, everybody, but their budget for something like that, the sewer budget, we could, we could do that in-house. They, if you notice, they moved the trailer.
I did.
I do agree that should be getting moved up, because that's a very good generator.
Yeah.
And it's in the right spot, but it's not housed properly. I think, I, I think I agree with you on that. I think Mark agrees with that too.
Yeah, it's going to overheat in a trailer.
Anything else on ARPA before we move on?
Can I share, can I just point some stuff out that I changed on there, so I don't, I don't want to catch anybody's, my surprise?
You might want to talk about the interest too, Mike.
What's that?
I want to talk about the interest.
Okay, we'll do. But on page two, the very bottom, the, the orange, yellowish reddish part, whatever it is, orangish-red rose, I took out the 26,000 that was earmarked in there or suggested for the feasibility study at the former Castle and Village School, because after Mark's conversation, it sounded like they couldn't kind of pare it down to what you needed and the money wasn't enough anyway. So I, I, just so you're aware, if you want me to put it back in, I'll put it back in, but I removed it and shows you what the numbers look like with it not in there.
No, I agree with that.
Yeah, I think we're priced right out of that feasibility study on that one.
Yeah, when we discussed that earlier, Mike.
100% responded, it was a 100,000 study and the follow-up to it would have been over a million, maybe two. You know, and, and at the end of it, we would have had a great facility and, you know, all the plans would have been in place on how much to charge and our, our residents and other residents, it would have been great. It's a full business plan ready to go, but...
That's a lot of money.
A lot of things are really nice, they're just not in your budget.
Yeah, I really like the looks of those new Lamborghinis, but you know...
Not this year.
Not going to be in my garage.
Where did you move the 26,000, Mike? Is that the blue box?
I did, I zeroed, when, I can, gave you the explanation of, there's, why the interest is separated out now, but I just took it out and it, it dropped, because this, this spreadsheet was a little confusing when you looked at the ARPA, because it was counting the interest. But when we go and when the board makes approvals of ARPA, it has to be only for the ARPA funds, not the interest. Because the town, the select board can do what it wants, choose for the interest as well. So to make it, when I fill out this, these reports to the federal government for obligations right now and expenditures, I have to, I can only say what has been used against the one, if you look at the last page, the ARPA, 1,349,072.27, that's what the town was given in ARPA funds, so I kept, I had to use that number. I couldn't add the, I had to remove the interest from it. So to do, to show you what there was in interest, I created that blue section at the bottom of the 53,709.97, we have an... seven hundred and nine dollars and twen, and ninety-seven cents, we have an interest of what is, what that could be used for, or my recommendation, not what it can be used for. And I, I put ten thousand dollars in there for the, the ARC GIS contractor, for all that infrastructure mapping, until I get a, until I get something back, in, you know, kind of concrete, I just threw that number in there right now. And then, like you said, a lot of this can be picked up by the sewer budget as well, because that's a lot of their infrastructure. And not everybody uses the sewer, so if you're looking at ARPA, this is ARPA, this is the interest in ARPA, so it made it a little more palatable, if somebody was looking at it that way. But it also, the very bottom line, an interest continues to accrue, so that number will change again, but it gives you almost sixteen thousand dollars in undesigned, unassigned money for, out of ARPA funds. And I was gonna add a column in here, after talking with the police chief today, our, our animal control officer is finished all of his onboarding stuff, he's got some training he needs to attend, we just bought him a bunch of equipment, and it's depleting uniforms, equipment, I, he's working under the PD, under Pete's tutelage, and it's, it took a lot of money out of his budget to get this stuff, because we, we couldn't recover stuff from the previous person and give clothes that are dirty and ratty to somebody. So, I was gonna say, could I squeeze a little bit of money out of the select board to pay for that stuff, so the money's in his budget, so when it comes time to go do stuff, that he's got the money in there to cover his mileage and, and payment stuff, because he does submit hourly. So, but I'll, I'll get that put into the next one, because I, I just, I gotta get the numbers back. It might be like a thousand dollars, maybe a little more, but it'll free up his budget, so we don't get an animal control officer, and then we say, "Oh, sorry, you're out of money," you know, so.
Also, that interest won't expire, correct?
Correct.
So, that gives us a few more options if we need it.
Yep, so, and...
Because everything in the pink will expire, everything in the blue will not.
That's, so hopefully that gives you the explanation of why I've had to break that out, but, there it is.
All good?
I think so.
Manager's report.
Go really fast. Page one, got a very unhappy owner of Midway Oil, based on what's happening. It's kind of late in the game, I guess, to want to change design of the curbs and the access points, because that went through V-Trans' right-of-way process, and that ship sailed, but he's not, he doesn't like what's happening there, and I'm meeting with him and the engineer tomorrow, hopefully a member of V-Trans is able to make it from the right-of-way permitting to talk to him, but it, what's gonna happen, is it likely to happen, if V-Trans, if we want to do that, and V-Trans said, "Send it back to us, we'll review it," it could take weeks to months. And then, you got a contractor who's been told he's got this job, and we're gonna halt him for, into the winter, and we're gonna leave it like that for the winter, or if it can be finished, like, I know they can still pour concrete in the winter. But it, it, he's gonna probably not be happy about that either, the contractor, that he's gonna be halted not making money on this project.
The forms are set for that section, aren't they?
They dug it up, I know, I was up there earlier today, but I, I don't, they didn't have the forms poured all the way through that, because they halted. They wanted to halt through to Wednesday, give a chance, give us, me a chance to meet with the, the business owner and everybody tomorrow, and then follow up on Wednesday to see where we go with it. But they've...
Specifically, he doesn't like where the curb cuts are.
Correct. Where the, one in front of Dunkin' Donuts, so egress, ingress off onto Route four A, they, they, they reduced the amount of openings there, the egress or ingress points, and he wants that open back up, so that it's less, it's more open, like when trucks come through, and, but they did, V-Trans did, I forgot what they call it, it's like something swing study or something, they, they have a model, and they program all this in, data in there, and they have a little fake truck that drives and sees it can turn and do all this stuff, and everything matched up for that. I saw a truck there delivering fuel today, with all that construction going on, and people at the gas pumps.
Yeah, I saw that, too.
So, I mean, it worked, it's just not, it's not the norm, right? So, but he's really mad, and I talked to his attorney last week, and got the Fussin' O'Neil involved, talked to him, and that's where the meeting got scheduled for tomorrow. So, he...
So, again, this is kind of like what happened at my place, is I don't think that the people that are involved in the sidewalk projects see the final design, or are given the final design before it happens.
This, in this case, the Fussin' O'Neil went to door-to-door, and they delivered it to the manager at that store, who identified himself as the manager, and asked that, Dan asked that he give it to the owner, and the owner said he was aware of this letter, but he didn't see the design, and I told him it was a public meeting, were you invited to the public meeting, and he said, "I was not." So, there was a shortfall probably there of that person showing up for a public meeting. And that was, the engineer, Fussin' O'Neil, that's, that was part of their function, is to, you know, keep in contact with them and let them know that there was public hearing going on and stuff like that.
I do know, in this case, we made sure every door, door got knocked on, and every door was delivered a plan. And if it didn't get through their organization, that's unfortunate, but that's not our responsibility. I know that's a hard approach to take, but you get what I'm saying, Rob.
Yeah, I get what you're saying, I just, I remember mine, because the plan...
Well, that, that didn't happen in your case. Your door was, may, may or may not have been knocked on, but you weren't provided a plan before construction began.
No, but we were invited to a meeting where we were given a design, and it was not the end product.
I see what you're saying. So, the, what you saw to the time...
Well, we saw at the meeting, when we were invited to the meeting, was not anywhere close to what the final design was, and there was nothing talked about behind it. So, I didn't go to this meeting for this sidewalk project, because it doesn't affect me, but whether or not that design was what was given during that meeting, I don't know. But that's, from now on, we need to make sure that...
I'm pretty confident that the final design was what was presented, but I don't know that a hundred percent. We're pretty confident, because we, we realize that errors that were made in the first time around, and they weren't repeated when we did this project. And they were not supposed to be repeated there, and I didn't check on it personally, but I'm pretty confident that it was done properly.
If that, that one there with the, the, once V-Trans did their right-of-way stuff on that, the only thing that got changed off that plan was when they didn't take the, the sign and the flower garden for the hair, for Julie's place, and then they had to jog the, they had to jog the sidewalk to be able to catch the man, or the, so the manhole fell into it. So, those, those are the big changes, I'm not gonna call them big, but those are the changes on that.
Hate to see it delayed, just for the loss of income form. I felt really bad for the guys on the other side of the road. It seemed like forever, all they had was this little line to go in if you wanted to get gas. You know, there's, one's a Sitco and one's a Mobil, right, right across the...
That's a Mobil at the corner.
We're talking about Mobil now, but the one on the other side of the road...
Oh, yeah.
Was torn up for an awful long time.
Yep.
So, they lost some of their curb cuts smaller, that's what they're unhappy about.
They, they reduced it to two, and they, they expanded them as big as they could go with them by their rules, and that, that was the, that was the end result, because otherwise, when it goes through V-Trans, their permitting folks, that's their opportunity to take, take, and take on stuff that they, that's in the right-of-way, that they don't have an enforcement division to go out there and say, "You need to move that sign, because it's in the right-of-way." They wait for these kind of projects to come through, and then they just say, "Move that sign, move that sign, move that sign," or whatever the case may be. And, because they'll say, "It's in our right-of-way."
It's very frustrating.
And I listen to the residents and their, their frustrations, and I, then I have to deal with the contractor, and the project manager, and the state of Vermont, V-Trans, and they all have their own little input to it all, and you're like, what's, sometimes you leave them, these meetings, like, "I don't even know what happened."
Right, the contractor really gets put in a bad spot.
Oh, yeah. The contractor is the bad guy.
Right, what you gonna do with his men tomorrow?
Yeah, yeah. And they'll, if they want to go after us, if they lost enough money, if this project were to halt long enough, where the contractor said, "I can't lay concrete, I guess we're gonna come back in the spring," he could say how much money he lost, he could sue us, you know, so, so when Fussin' O'Neil ended today with Dan Minette, he basically said, "So, I guess we're gonna move forward, and we'll just have a really angry person tomorrow."
Well, if it's a state right-of-way, and they did the swing studies, they're not gonna change, right?
Probably not. That, they, they were, at least my experience with them, based on the other sidewalk projects, highly unlikely that they're gonna change.
I think he was mainly concerned about access to the drive-through for Dunkin' Donuts.
Maybe that truck can make it, I can make it with a car. That truck is backed right in there today.
Well, they have, their delivery truck usually's on the, on the drive-through side, and there's just barely enough room for a car to get, you know, through the drive-through, and that's coming straight in there. With this curb cut, it doesn't go straight anymore, they gotta kind of come in and jog to get into that spot. But they did these studies, they're, they're saying that, that you could get through there, so. So, that was, that's just, that was a long thing, but that's, that's what's going on with that sidewalk project.
You weren't too quick with that, Mike.
I know.
Let's move on.
Sorry.
I am confident, Rob, that we did it right.
Age sixteen?
That must be the end, other girl.
We already talked about that.
At least touch on your yellow highlights.
I'm, oh, it's not, like, the stuff you don't, like, you know, the bird's eye...
Some of these we already talked about.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, the, the true grant projects for grants and aid are done, except for hydroseeding. I'm standing corrected on that part. So, they gotta hydroseed it. Better roads, they started on Pencil Mill, at least Jeff told me that today, I didn't go up and look at it, but they were starting on Pencil Mill, they did the grading, I got some complaints on Barker Hill from a resident, and they were going up, Jeff was going up there to look at it. We did, we, when we did some workup, they were supposed to pitch the road away from his driveway, and the last grading, it didn't happen, according to Jeff, and the water's washed out in the end of his driveway. So, we're gonna, they're gonna go up there and look at that one, see what they can do to fix it. The signs have been ordered, and all of it's in, I was told today, so we gotta get, pick up signs, both, there's street signs, there's all the signs for this grant project for safe, highway safety improvement, and so soon as we get the materials, they can start working on that. I think I shared with you about the transfer station, operators, both of them are leaving. I filled one, the Roustabout position already, but the chief operator, I just got another application today, so just gotta keep plugging away at it. Mechanics' job's still not filled, have discussion with the select board on that when I get back, about possibility of how to maybe look at that in a different way, but I'm not prepared to put numbers down yet, so I can't share all of it. The wastewater treatment facility, the police department, and the village school are all gonna get their, either camera systems or the alarms over the next, not, the week of the, whatever it is, eighteenth or nineteenth. I put that in here. Just the water, I'm on page seven, under number three, wastewater collection system repair and maintenance. I put Green Mountain Hold on ice right now until Russ and his crew, after I talked with them more, they didn't try their own camera on both sides of that, so the quality of the camera's pretty poor, so they might not really get much out of it, but especially the bigger the pipe, the bigger the pipe, the cameras, it gets farther away, it's very distorted. So, but I asked them to get, get both sides, and then if they can't see, or it's not quality enough, or they don't find anything, because he can only go, it's a hundred feet, by the time you get, the camera's up, up here, you gotta get down, might be like eighty, ninety feet or something that they can go.
If you get lucky and we'll hit water somewhere in that ninety feet?
That's what we hope, and then you go to the other side, and you go to ninety feet, and if it doesn't show up, you know, it's in the middle, and our camera can't reach it. But I, I talked to Russ, he said that Dundons has a camera that, that might work. They, they did it down at the former village school, so that, that we're gonna have them do that first from both sides, and then go to the next step, but that forty-five hundred dollars a day from Green Mountain Pipeline, that's on ice right now. The assertion valve was installed, I'm on page eight, down at the main pump station. The joystick was installed at the, on the tractor today, and it worked as it should, but we couldn't operate the blades until the, so Evan was, when I left there, he was gonna go put it through its paces kind of thing, and see if it failed, but everything was, everything was working. So, now we can move forward with fixing the...
Ears.
The gear, yeah. One of the things that, Mr. Chairman, the, the vehicle replacement schedules for both the fire department, the highway department, and the paving part of that, and the, and the police department, has the board given any consideration to that? Because we're getting closer to budget season, and give me some guidance on how you want me to proceed with those, because I, I mean, what I, if you said add it and let's see where it is, I can do that, and then we can pare back, if that's the guidance. But I can add what's on those sheets, if you agree what's on there is what you want to see, and then I can put it on there, and you see the ugly, what it's gonna be, and then we pare back from there. Because I'm starting early this year to get it to the select board, so that there, I know it's gonna be contentious, so it's gonna give more time to kind of look at this thing.
I would say put it on there, I mean, we're probably gonna have to pull back on it some, but, I mean, we gotta have the money to replace the stuff.
My opinion is start with worst-case scenario, and then we'll back it, you know, then we'll have to see what we think is the right thing to do after that, but at least we'll know what the, you know, the worst-case scenario is, and then we can collectively as a group, six of us, put our heads together and decide what's right.
The same will go for the wages, as we get to November, and we look at the Consumer Price Index for the, for the Ask Me and the New England PBA, if you want the non-union employees to get the same as those other employees, we'll, we have to wait till November to do that, but then what is, because the non-union employees don't get, they don't have a chart for step raises, so they're always kind of flapping out there when it comes to like percentage, you know, like, a total of a three percent raise, or something like that, and then we can look at what the Consumer Price Index is, and then kind of look at what the, if, if you want three percent, then I have to look at what the difference would be.
Is the whole town union, non-union?
Except for Christine, she's in the Ask Me Union.
Okay, and is there any other non-union besides there, that are sold around somewhere?
Yeah, Pete, Pete's under a contract, Jeff's under a contract. And then the part-time people that are not in the unions. But it's, it's a few. I mean, Nedra, Nedra isn't in the union, the administrative assistant, that's not in the union, the accountant's not in the union. And that's really it, besides part-time people that are in there.
Mike, you're asking to put the numbers into the budget that will pair up with our replacement schedule, is that, is that, do I, am I following you right when you say, "Put in the numbers"?
Yeah, so the full numbers, what it showed on the vehicle replacement plans, to show you what it would look like if you approved as, as it was presented to you, and then you get a chance to, like, pare back on it.
If we're, if we're gonna stick with that replacement plan, the numbers have gotta be in there.
Well, that's my point. I just, but I, I wanted, I wanted you to say it, so...
Odds are, we're probably not gonna be able to stick on that vehicle replacement plan, just because of the cost.
Okay.
That's why I suggested, let's start with the worst-case numbers, then we'll see...
Yeah.
You know, we'll see what...
In a perfect world, that would be nice, but...
See what the ugly thing is, and then decide what the right thing is to do.
A lot of effort was put into that replacement plan.
A lot of effort was put into that replacement plan, and I just hate to see it get thrown out the window.
Well, we're not gonna throw it out.
No, no, but I mean, you're already talking, "Oh, gotta pare back here and pare back there," so I just-
It's a lot, Bob.
I, I, I'm sure it is. I'm sure it is, but I just-
You have to get a budget that passes.
Yeah.
Well, let's see how bad it is before we start making any decisions.
Right. I'm on page ten, former CVS. We're just kinda leaning forward in the saddle to get service, and make sure that if there's anything wrong, that they find with the boiler, that we have some time to react to it before it gets cold weather. And then they're also putting the camera system in down at the village school, you know. I'm on page twelve. Town office. Dick looked at the doors today, Aaron had done, I got a, I got a question I gotta follow up on, but he finished the doors at the town office. Police station alarm system will be installed on the seventeenth of September. I'm on page thirteen, vehicles and equipment for police department. Justin thinks that the new cruiser should arrive, he thought, this week, or, yeah, the week of the ninth, but I guess it's only Monday, so hopefully that's what comes in, but it won't come in decal, it still has to be sent up to get that done. I talked to Karen, as everyone knows, I publicly wanna thank Karen for six years of, of service to the town, but she's leaving by the end of this month. And one of the things that she's been working on is the traffic ordinance with, with Chief Mantello, and she said that she is committed to working on that this last three weeks, so we can get that, a draft before the select board, because it's a, it's a hot mess, and when they go to court, it's, there's pieces, pieces of paper dated nineteen eighty-three, you know, it's, it's, there's some older stuff than that, back when George Stravers was the police chief here. So to get it updated, we kinda pirated one from Rutland Town that was really well-written and, and really all-inclusive, so that's what we're using as a base document, and Pete and Karen will be working on that to get that finalized. I'm on page fourteen, the UTV, I've sent, I think I sent the board pictures, or at least one picture of the UTV, so that's in our possession now, and that has to get decals, and then some other things put on it, like racks, and the, the, the skid units were, they're not gonna be here right now, so we don't have those. They borrowed a trailer from the highway department to put it on, it's on that right now, in case they had to move it around. Karen got the insurance put on it, but you have to go and get it registered, you can't do it online, because it's the first time, so we gotta get that scheduled and get it registered. I'm on page fifteen, park and ride, and it's also the town office. Doc Dirksen, and I forgot his wife's name, I apologize. Somebody know what his wife's name?
Pat.
Pat. So, so Pete and Pat Dirksen agreed to take care of the flowers again at the end of this year and next year, both at the town office, the park and ride, and they talked to me, I got, somebody talked to me today about the library, or the post office in Castleton. They want, they wanted to know if they could do that, and I told them, "That's not ours." So they gotta go talk to the post office.
What happened at the park and ride that had police cars and ambulance and everything?
I can, I can show you after the meeting. It's not pretty. I'll show everybody.
We talked about that, so that, barring your questions, that's what I have.
You got to my page, sixteen.
Your favorite page. It said, and why does mine say, "Order apple pies for Mary Lee"?
I almost brought one today, but I don't wanna spoil you too much.
I was just gonna ask you to slice it up and coffee with cream, please.
I don't drink coffee, so you have no, neither an instant for somebody wants-
Well, there's more than just you here tonight.
Don't forget your pinch of salt when you make coffee. So let's move on to purchase orders.
We don't have a total on this one, we just wanna make sure it's the same as what's written on here.
Do you have purchase orders in yours?
The purchase orders have been in the back of the warrants in my packet, and in the originals, I just gave to Rob.
We all set? I would make a motion to approve purchase order number zero five two five nine five to T.W. Ferguson for culvert bands for the bird's eye grant for the sum of three thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety cents.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded on this Pete, purchase order, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm sorry, who's seconded?
I do.
Thank you.
Good? I would make a motion to approve purchase order zero five two eight two two to Adirondack two-way radio for the sum of eleven thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents, and that's the new radio for the new tower truck.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded.
It's also a mobile repeater system, too. It's not just a radio.
In the mobile repeater system.
So I have two questions. First question is, what, can you describe to us what a mobile repeater system will do for us?
It will use the truck's mobile radio, it'll relay through the truck, which has more power than a portable does, so a lot of these scenes where there's very poor coverage, they can run their mobiles through that truck as a mobile repeater to push back to dispatch or here at the station.
That's gonna be pretty handy to have.
Yeah, yeah.
Second question, is this coming out of the reserve account?
No, actually, he's on, I believe this was part of the, the carryover, as part of that resolution.
Okay.
And Heath met with, with Joe, and Joe was pretty confident that he's got the money, there'll be that much money left over to be able to do this. Can you confirm that, Heath?
One more, many times. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. Joe said there's a little more actually than that in the carryover, so it should be good. When I talked to him last Thursday, Friday, I don't remember which day it was now.
But are you, Heath, are you prepared to take any of that, if it's just, if there is a shortfall when the audit comes in, that if any money has to come out of your operating budget, do you, do you have that flexibility?
I, there's not that much flexibility in the operating, not for all of it, but I could probably find some for some of it.
Well, I will know more, I guess, once we get the audit, but Joe, Joe said he's, you know, everything that cleared all of our invoices and all that stuff, that he was confident he had the money in there, that's on the resolution, or at least enough to cover this anyway.
I have no more questions. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, who seconded that again?
Mary Lee did.
Thank you.
Opposed? So this next item- You're welcome. I'm thinking what we gotta do is rescind the original motion and, a new motion, is that what you need, or just amend the motion? What exactly do you need?
Is this for the thirty-two grand?
Yeah, the K-N-M Defender.
I apologize, I gotta read through this. Made a motion to purchase the truck.
The only thing that's different on the K-N-M Defender-
Is the year.
That it's a, because when it was ordered, it come in as a twenty-five instead of a twenty-four, you guys have already made a motion to purchase it, but it come in as a twenty-five on the paperwork instead of a twenty-four.
Yeah, see, our motion specifically says a twenty-twenty-four, and now we have a twenty-twenty-five, so I think, probably, I'm not sure what the proper way to do this is, I think Mark Brown made the motion, so perhaps if he rescinds that, or amends that motion. The motion was made on July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. You should have the minutes from that meeting in your packet at the very back of your-
I've got it right here.
Perfect. So as parliamentarian, maybe you could figure out what we need to do. Because you made a motion to buy a twenty-twenty-four.
The price is the same.
The price is the same.
So can I just make an amendment to that motion?
I don't see why not. It has to be something to make the auditors happy.
Okay. I would like to make an amendment to my motion of July twenty-second to purchase a twenty-twenty-five K-N-M Defender from Central Vermont Motorcycles for thirty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Perhaps we should also say it was a twenty-twenty-four originally specified, so it's in the minutes.
Doesn't the amendment do that?
I guess it does.
Yeah.
Mary Lee, you seconded the original motion, would you second this one?
Sure.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Glad we didn't have to send it back.
We're gonna-
He gotta go with the twenty-four instead of the twenty-five.
It's one of those deals where we gotta, we gotta make the auditors happy, you know?
Okay, for the next parade, we're gonna use this, and he's gonna be riding in the back. Way back.
You're gonna push the button so it dumps me right out in the middle of the street, right?
You got it.
She's in charge of the button.
She wants to be, trust me.
Ready for warrants?
Yes.
I would make a motion to approve warrant number zero nine zero five A for the sum of thirty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars. Warrant number zero nine zero nine R for the sum of seven hundred dollars. Warrant number zero nine zero five for the sum of thirteen thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-four cents. Warrant number zero nine zero six for the sum of twenty-five thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-six cents. Warrant number zero nine zero nine for the sum of one hundred and twenty thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and five cents. Warrant number zero eight two nine P for the sum of twenty thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifteen cents. And warrant number zero nine zero five P for the sum of twenty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars and one cent.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded, any discussion on the warrants? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Guess you want me to start signing here, right, Dave?
I'm gonna get the urge.
Mr. Chairman, while they're signing that, just wanted to remind the board that I'll be leaving Wednesday, and coming back on the twenty-second. So I talked to Dick today, and while I'm gone, if the staff or anybody needs any guidance or questions or approvals on things-
Don't be afraid to call.
Be afraid to call Dick. So he's agreed to that, and so I'll see, I won't, I'm not taking my computer with me.
Good for you.
You're finally getting smart.
My wife would probably have stabbed me in the throat. But I also have a new computer, because this one's dying, and they're gonna migrate it while I'm gone, so that, the power supply's going in. And, but yeah, so that's, like, two, then I'm, I'm back for a week, and Karen leaves, so there's gonna be this, like, crazy, crazy right, right-seat ride, and I've, we've got a bunch of applicants that we're looking, we got quite a few applicants for that.
For her position?
For that one, yeah. And I got another one for the, another one for the, uh, transfer station.
I'm glad to hear that's interesting. It's unfortunate she's leaving, and we thank her for everything she's done, but it's heartening to know that you have some interest in that position as well.
Yeah, there's some pretty qualified candidates. But I, it's gonna be probably hell for, until that's filled, because I'm gonna be doing both of those, trying to keep up with both those things, so there'll be balls that get dropped, I'll be even making more mistakes on this, on the agendas probably, but hopefully I can find the right person to fill it and start training them, and it's gonna take, it took, Karen and I came in at the same time, little six months apart, and it, it takes a long time to get to know these jobs, so I don't have, I'm not disillusioned that whoever comes in there is gonna take a while to, to learn all this stuff, because every day still is new stuff that happens, too, so it'll, it'll, it'll have its growing pains, I guess. There will be a party, too.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so I'll, let everybody know, so they can stop, have some, something to eat and wish her well, and you'll be able to do that.
Date, figures of date, her last day, or?
The last day, the twenty-seventh, is a Friday, that's what we were looking at. And I, I said, "Why do you put a sick time in for already, you plan on being sick on the twenty-seventh?" She's like, "Oh, I took that out of there." I'm like, "Oh, that's pretty tricky. Well, I'll show up and she won't."
Well, how about well catered?
Yeah, we've, we've, we did one for Melanie and Bob Ward when they left, and it was a good turnout, and just a good time to say thank you, and-
Yeah, Melanie really wanted to be sick on hers, but I convinced her she had to show up. Not really, but. Let's move on. Select board comments. Mary Lee?
None.
Bob, for Rob?
I have nothing this week.
What's your name, Rob? Mark?
Uh, one thing I wanted to mention, obviously, Mrs. Lamy passed away. I'm sure that you have something that you're planning, but I think that, you know, considering the decades of service to the community, I think it would be fitting if, at the very least, all of us sign a card and, and maybe send flowers or something.
I'll have Karen, we did, we did a card form today and pass it around the office, but if you, would, somebody wanna pick up a card from the select board, or if you want me to have Karen pick up one, and you guys will stop by and sign it? And if you want us to send, we were already gonna send flowers. We've been kinda taking care of Jim now, because it's a pretty, pretty big void, I guess, when you're, he's married for fifty-eight years.
Yeah.
So Karen and I have been, we brought him some food, and checking in on him, and stuff like that, so, but he came to work today, and the funeral services are Saturday, so something should come out in the paper. And I'm gonna be gone, and Karen's gonna be in New Jersey, so we're gonna have not as much representation probably, but, so, look for that in the paper, but I believe it's Saturday. Fairhaven.
Yeah, I'm gonna be out of town as well.
But we certainly can send the flowers and, and get, get, is it best that I just have Karen pick up a card, and you guys stop by the office and sign it?
I think so.
So it gets, it's only in one place, not getting passed around, probably?
Yeah.
All right, so we'll do that. All right, so we'll do that.
Would you sign my name to it?
Sure. You have a, have a check too? Copy it as best I can.
He's never seen it.
I had a commander once who said, if I take a check to the bank, they're gonna probably say I forged it. Because I've signed, I've signed his name for so many years.
Oh, really?
Yeah. You know Kurt Miller, everybody know Kurt Miller? Yeah, it's him. Right, thank you.
Bob, anything?
No.
I'm good. So let's move on, we're gonna skip brief recap and go right to action items. The only one I wanted to mention again is the salt shed bid, this is gonna have to get done.
Yep.
Anyone else got something that one of the six of us has to get done? And we're gonna, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for personnel.
I'll make the motion to go into executive session for personnel.
I'll second it. It's moved and seconded, we go into exec, executive session for personnel at nine fifty-one with the board and the town manager.